Mr. Pazewicz.
Here.
Dr. Sheenmacher.
Here.
Mr. Sutner.
Here.
Ms. Shields. And Dr. Burke, here. Uh, and we need to put...
I'll plug there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty in its heart.
And then, someone recently said?
Encouraging learners to apply skills and experiences to enrich the entire.
And then, how to student success and 3.01 school year opening of school.
Well, good evening. Nice to see everybody. Uh, sorry we had to make the quick switch. Um, as you can imagine, things are a little bit, uh, off of commission in the area. Uh, so all of our schools just the boards were, um, you know, rather than tree damage, um, we seem to be okay. And then obviously the power outage, but yeah, that's, you know, uh, seeing significant damage to our schools. Uh, Heather and her team were quick to respond. Um, so thank you for that, Heather, and all of your work. Um, so we're gonna, we're gonna give an update on where, um, the progress we've made since the last meeting uh, with the board regarding our opening of school. That's coming quickly on August 20th for all of our students. And all the cabinet members, uh, here will contribute, uh, along the way. And Spencer's gonna pull up, um, one of the presentation and see if you're free to see some of the slides.
Um... Do we have this?
Do you other, and you should be able to see it.
If it doesn't come up, click refresh.
Well, there's no administrative contact.
There's no administrative contact.
We didn't have this earlier, though.
You would've entered it.
Refresh.
Did you hit it? Did you go for the, and hit up in the, a bar to refresh your screen?
Uh, yeah, refresh. It must've just loaded. Okay, now we have it.
Oh, this is, yeah.
So we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna have a conversation with all of the board and then hopefully, uh, you'll have questions along the way or ask the C clar or affirm some familiarities. But as you can see on the screen, some of the, um, details, some of the procedures, some of the work that we've been, been doing, um, diligently to get us prepared. Um, I think it's also fair to remind the board and I think for all of us that, you know, it's, it's a stressful time. It's stressful for, um, our families, it's stressful for our staff. Um, there's a lot of anxiety right now. And certainly, the, the health and the safety piece of it, uh, being at the forefront. Um, a lot of moving parts, a lot of changes and, um, it's, they'll continue to be, to be that way. Um, but we're doing all we can to try and, um, you know, bring some promise to it. Um, obviously, the preparedness that we have and the work that we're doing, um, is enough to, to do that and for both our, our staff and also our students' families. So first, we're gonna talk about, uh, the three areas. We wanna give the board an update on where we ended up and missing changes too. But, uh, if you wanna go to the next slide there. So from an ECK for our commitments, uh, you can see the amount of where our families chose, percentage, which was, um, very similar. We, we anticipated it'd be a little higher in this area. But you'll see on the next slide, as we get to the grades one through six, when we did our initial survey out to our families, um, the onsite was right about forty-nine, I think, percent, somewhere around there. So what we initially told us and where we ended up, um, was, was pretty much in line. And then you see our thirty-two percent for e-learning and then the hybrid blended at the grades one through six. And that's either looking at an AM schedule or a PM schedule, the half day, which is at seventeen point five. Have we...
Yes, sorry. These, these percentages were collected after the window closed. And so it would have the, almost the entire population. Um, when students and families did not make a select selection, uh, we defaulted the, um, elementary to onsite and the middle school students, uh, to onsite as well. The high school students were defaulted to the hybrid option of the high school.
So how, what, how many of that, what percent does that roughly, which you have a default?
Well, I would say about ten percent. We had, we had a very good response from the community.
And even when the, after they didn't respond, we did make efforts to reach that out, uh, try and get them to, if they, they had, and we had some that just kind of were late entries for whatever reason, they were way out of town, whatever family situation. And then you see the middle school commitments. Um, well, it was twenty-seven percent for e-learning and fifty percent for onsite. Um, and then the hybrid, um, core was at twenty-two percent. And then the elected hybrid, um, which we expected was a little bit smaller, or a lot smaller. And then finally, our high school model, which the hybrid was recommended and really the default. So e-learning twenty-seven percent onsite, quarter of the population. And then the hybrid, about forty-eight percent.
Not really much movement from, from the first survey.
No, we, uh, we're very appreciative that our, how quickly our parents also responded to the survey. It made, uh, our, our work a little bit easier. Be able to, be able to get to it, uh, in more time, we actually, you know, sort of their teacher assignments and, um, student roster and such.
And as far as the, uh, protocol setting for the number of students in the building at any time, these fit pretty well, correct? With the amount of students that we're allowed to have and should have.
Yeah, I mean, really, the, the state has, has put no capacity on building size or number of people. The capacity goes into the, uh, the, any given one's space. Uh, but what I, yeah, like at the middle school level, uh, they've done a lot of work to try and keep teams together. Uh, and the, the teachers are moving and now the middle school students are moving. Um, so trying to mitigate and keep cohorts of kids together. I think in the high school, um, on the, like a team box would be, I think David talked about about nine hundred kids in the building between the two campuses. And then the other day, I think it was more of seven, that year something, so. Seven hundred. Um, with, we know the kids are gonna be leaving as well, to, you know, people off campus, um, for the, the extended lunch hours. Um, and then certainly we'll talk a little bit about the, this, the classroom setup and the space setup and the bed at the elementary. Same thing, um, as we, as we move through our lower levels. Troy, wanna just give an update from a personnel side of things and?
Uh, sure. It, first of all, I, I have to tell you, there was a tremendous amount of time that was put into trying to place all the students with their teachers and, and trying to align everything. Just as the administrative team, uh, we had somewhere close to ten hours together in trying to map this out. And this was after all the elementary teachers had looked at all their numbers and planned it all out. Uh, where we ended up, we ended up with forty-seven teachers overall. That's across all areas. And if you look to the right, you can see the breakdown based on elementary, middle and high. Uh, so we had forty-seven teachers placed in an e-learning, uh, fashion. The thirty-one that are listed is onsite. We obviously have many more teachers than that that are onsite. What we've listed there are those whose assignments changed, uh, in order to try to accommodate the needs of the students and class sizes that we had. So those assignment changes included anything from changing grade levels to changing buildings. Uh, and this is primarily at the elementary level. That's where most of that occurred. And then we had twenty-nine teachers, uh, that are gonna be working in a hybrid mode, uh, getting across levels. Most of this, again, is in the elementary side of things. Uh, from a hiring standpoint, we are pretty close to being done. Certified teachers, we have a, a teacher that's being approved tonight at Geneva. I posted a, uh, and anticipated opening for that, so we'll have one more hiring in that area. But other than that, we're really fairly close. We have some, uh, anticipated needs, which you'll see on the board where we're asking for some additional FTE to try to cover those anticipated needs. Of course, we'll only apply those as, as those needs come up. Uh, recess and, uh, lunch and recess monitors, our current structure that we've had with the lunch remains, uh, they've been dropping quickly. A lot of them that we have are in an older category of the culture uncomfortable and being back from the school, it's called kids. So we're, we're working to see what our options are there. We're actually considering looking at, uh, some of our other staff. If we're not applying them fully, for example, our parent touch notes, uh, we can augment some of those positions that we need. Uh, custodian staff, we have posted for ten additional positions in order to support the cleaning efforts within all the buildings. And then self-certification monitors, again, we may, uh, tap some of our existing staff on the shoulder to be able to assist in that area.
Now, I think it's, we'll talk about timelines a little bit. Um, you know, today was, uh, our certified personnel, our principals reached out to all of them and talked about any reassignment changes and the roles and responsibilities, you know, for this year. And I, again, I think I wanna commend our staff. Um, it's not, not easy, uh, to have to switch, you know, two weeks before or less than that before the school year starts. Uh, and from all, all accounts, as I've talked to the principals, um, you know, the willingness for our staff to be flexible, uh, to take on new responsibilities. You know, when you have, you know, whether it's reading specialists or therapy coaches or TOCs or, or people that are moving from building to building or grade levels to different grade level, you know, we've had some of them in a short period of time. Um, and, uh, felt really proud and thankful, you know, as the board should be, of, of what they're willing to do and, um, uh, again, I guess I can't think of it off.
You know, of all the staff members that we moved around, there were, there were a couple that we took a little bit deeper look at of what we were doing. But overall, I mean, one of the staff members said we got this. Um, and probably the biggest concern for all of them is will I be able to return to my position once we move into next year? Will I be able to return to my building, return to my position? So once we answered that question, it really just kind of calmed everything down and everybody was all in board.
Yeah, we will. We will make every effort to move people back to where they were, um, yesterday.
And that's, it's, that's really no different than any year. We make every, every effort to keep all of our staff in their positions, in their building. But obviously, based on the enrollment that we have at the different buildings, different grade levels within the buildings, there's always some people that have to move. And we've made it clear that that's always still the, the potential. But we'll make every effort.
Any questions about?
Was, you know, I mean, with the parent, where the parent outcomes were and the teacher preferences? I mean, did, did we have alignment or?
Well, we didn't have, we didn't have full alignment. But what we did have are those teachers who had documented medical needs, uh, that put them at high risk of being in the classroom. We were able to take care of all of those. And then we were able to move down a list of those who had preferences or maybe had family members, uh, that were at high risk. And we just kind of moved through, through the list. Uh, as we moved off medical needs, our, our focus always became, what do we need for the students? What's the best fit for, for what we're trying to get done? But it worked out amazingly well.
And from a student's standpoint, we were, uh, able to honor almost nearly every request, um, at the, especially at the elementary level. Uh, the challenges that we did run into, uh, were when, um, elementary students and families selected the hybrid model and then, uh, the afternoon for the morning. And so there were some circumstances where we had to ask the families if they would switch, uh, to the morning. Uh, 'cause the morning hybrid option, about seventy-five percent of our families selected. Only about twenty-five percent selected the afternoon option. So there were some of those outlier cases, uh, but not, not many.
Any other questions related to bringing out staff and these? You know, what, an area that we're gonna have to, we'll be discussing tomorrow with the administrative group is, you know, when you look at the, the amount of e-learning staff and you look at, uh, the hybrids, you know, from a, uh, oversight standpoint or supervision or evaluation standpoint, you know, what does that mean? Um, or administrative structure at the building level and the different processes.
So, so one question I have on this is, is we discussed this before, uh, the, the teachers that will be involved in the e-learning and hybrid. And I guess my, this is, this is a rough idea. What percent of these teachers are truly ready for that? And, and the ones that will need some help, uh, can you just touch base on what we're gonna be doing to get them there?
Yeah, so the, the professional development, those first five days are gonna be very key for us. And we have some of that outlined in a, in a later slide. Um, we also will have ongoing support through the Teachers on Special Assignment. Um, and now that, that support, um, is less because we have some of our Teachers on Special Assignment who are now, uh, teaching a hybrid section. Uh, and so that'll be something that we're gonna have to, um, have to deal with throughout the course of the, uh, of the semester. But the majority of our PD is focused on just that, uh, with dual modality instruction, um, eighty-five minute block periods, um, ensuring that we're using Canvas and our LMS system to its full capacity. Uh, we got some work to do in that area.
I gave this special note.
So we've been, um, now that the assignments have been, um, finalized and we were able to put kids into their, their models and we know how many kids in each area. Uh, we've been going around with the schools. Um, Heather's and her team have been, um, you know, working with the building principals to look at desks and furniture and how are we gonna fit certain amount of kids by grade level. Um, so you'll, you'll see some of the slides in a second about there's some, some of our primary levels. Um, maybe have a little bit lower class sizes, like let's say kindergarten class where there's two sections, uh, AM and PM. They might be able to have tables, because there's six foot tables, and we can fit, you know, twelve or thirteen kids in there and keep them six feet apart. And both from the width but also across from each other. And where else, people for those tables, we're looking at a Plexiglas, uh, possibility in between. Nothing we necessarily have to add if we're seven feet apart. Um, but, so you'll see some pictures where that is. Um, we've asked all of our, our staff, when you think about some of the couches and some of the flexible furniture that our teachers have been putting in their rooms and, you know, creating really cool learning environments over the years, just for space, uh, needs right now, we've asked them to, to pull those out. Um, and we've also removed any excess furniture and we've put it in a location each of the schools for now. And then once the staff comes back, they get into their workspaces and their classrooms. If they're missing something or they see that they could add a file cabinet or another cabinet or another, you know, kidney table, then we'll have those in the building still where they can, they can arrange a room that fits their needs. Um, and then whatever we don't have or don't need, um, Heather and her crew have rented, um, forty foot storage units. If you go over by the baseball field, you'll see them by the maintenance area. We're gonna be storing all the furniture there. And we label them so all the staff in the buildings will get their furniture back. That was, that was their convenient one. And, you know, as, as they get into the classrooms, um, we have committed to our staff that if, if there's teachers who, you know, and want, want in their desk, they want Plexiglas barriers, if there's, you know, tables of, of kids that were, we need some extra, uh, separation with a barrier. Then, um, Heather and her team, they can do an all-in-house. We, we are literally buying sheets of Plexiglas and you'll see some pictures of what, what they can do with them. So a couple, a couple different pictures here that you'll see, uh, from some of our schools. Um, the far right is, is your full grade. This is a kindergarten classroom, um, where there's gonna be like twelve kids in, in here. Those are six foot tables. So you'll have a student on either end of it. And then they're six feet apart from head to head, uh, sitting in a chair. And then you'll see the bottom there, the bottom center, that's a classroom that has some tables. Again, six feet apart, um, actually about seven feet apart with the kids in there. And then the, the desks, um, and then you see the other ones. Some of our, you'll, at Y E S, you might see some sections of classes where there's nineteen, twenty kids, um, six feet apart, and set up like that. Um, most of them, um, are a little bit, are quite a bit less than that. There'll be some that are maybe seventeen, but then you're getting down to where there's, in a hybrid model, you're gonna see eight or nine kids, eleven kids, or thirteen kids. Even in a, uh, all-day, some of the classrooms, there's fourteen, thirteen, fifteen, well, just kinds. And as they get a little bit, uh, in the middle school, we might get, you know, you see some that are gonna be twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, and they're gonna be bigger classrooms that, that spread out. So just, it, it, it varies by the building, by the room size, by configuration. But, uh, this is the work that Heather's team now has been doing. Uh, if you walked in our school and you see a number on the door, thirteen, eighteen, and they're putting, they're configuring their classrooms and then taking the excess desks, desks and furniture out. Along those lines, uh, we talked about all the, the things that have to go up for social distancing, for barriers, hygiene reminders, markings throughout the school. Um, on the right there is where we're putting most of that. So the main office, um, some of the, the tables and desks will have barriers. Um, the decals that you'll see in a second, some examples, uh, will be bathroom floor decals, you know, way here. So one of the students out of sync, they're, you know, they're gonna be six feet away, the next student in line. Uh, lunch areas, we're gonna have little coffers, little stickers on the seats where to sit or where not to sit for kids nowhere to go, uh, hand washing signs and the mark, markings. Uh, what we haven't done yet on the sidewalks outside of the schools, for women to drop off, let there's walkers where people know exactly where to stand. Some pictures of this. So these are each of our, our schools, the front office areas. Not all of them were represented. But you'll see, uh, on the bottom left there and the top right. Um, the top right is circle center, it's almost, uh, entirely around it, the secretary, the administrative assistance areas. Bristol Bay there in the, the middle. And then you see up top, there's a, uh, administrative assistance desk. So not only do they have the, the main office, um, you know, on the countertop there, but then each of the assistants at their desk have a, a shield. So these are, you'll see, this is Bristol Bay in the top right. Um, along the hallways, all, all the way down, both floors that will be in all of our schools. Obviously, different schools will have different configurations. Um, the please wait here is right outside the bathroom. Those also are in the bathroom. Uh, and then you see on the left, what it just says, effective for practicing social distancing. That will be in all of our schools. Um, they'll be in the main office areas as well. And then we've given each of our schools, uh, additional floor decals. So as they get into things with the gymnasium or the cafeteria, as they see the needs, that, the teachers get into buildings, um, and say, well, we need things over here as well, and start looking at the real logistics when kids are there. And we want them to have the opportunity to contribute to that and put this, the decals where they, they see all different tests. Any questions about the signage or decals? Uh, what I don't have up there is we're, we're having the, you know, the clear glass holders for, for hygiene, hand washing reminders, uh, how to do it, um, you know, by the drinking fountain, but in the bathrooms and the hallways. And then obviously the hand sanitizers stations throughout the schools as, as much as we're allowed to, so to speak.
Are the drinking fountains functioning?
So the, the drinking fountains, um, we are, we adding, uh, bottle, um, filling stations for our drinking fountain, much like around the corner here, it's filling. So we're gonna encourage students to be bringing their own water bottles and fill up that, that station versus using the drinking fountain as we know it. That makes sense.
Will we disable that part of it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
On, on some of that, we can disable the bottom part and we added just the bottle filler. But if we bought the whole bottle filler unit, there's some of them that you cannot disable the bottom part of the whole unit. But most of them are add-on, so most of them we can disable.
This is an area, uh, obviously, where the greatest amount of work and attention, um, needs to come. When you talk about the process and procedures, and I think if there's anything that's causing great anxiety with, with people in general, staff, students, families, it's gonna be the procedures, the process and, and, uh, you know, how are we gonna ensure these things happen? And I, I completely understand that. Um, you know, we are, as the board, if you had a chance to see, we are creating an employee playbook that will be going out when we, to walk through our staff, when they, they come this week. Um, but as you can see, the areas on the left are the high, high over, over, uh, arching titles and, and areas of, of focus right now, um, that we're working on. And the areas on the left, um, you know, but the process, when someone gets sick, um, we have a defined process, um, whether there's exposure or the symptoms, whether there's an actual positive test. Um, and we'll be sharing that with all the staff and the flow chart. And I go, um, going to has, uh, training come up with nurses as well, um, where they're gonna be talking through protocol, make sure everyone and our administrators, uh, are, are well-versed and know what to do at a, at a moment's notice. Um, we do have, um, backup rooms available in all of our buildings that I've identified. But if there is, you know, two students come down, um, with symptoms, and we're gonna be separating those kids into two separate rooms. Or if we have, uh, you know, someone that is experiencing symptoms, a staff member, students, we have protocol and process in place of how we're gonna be kind of coordinating. Um, you wanna talk about the health questionnaire, the process?
Sure.
Yes, please.
Good question. So, in that all due count, it's very difficult to agree. My biggest concern is actually how we're going to address the, the failures. Uh, there, there's going to be failures. I mean...
What do you mean by failures? I'll be clear about that.
So, yeah. So when I go to the health question workout, there's like, when you come in, you do a questionnaire, you get your temperature taken, there's signs everywhere, wear your mask at all times. The only time you can take your mask off is if you're actively exercising on the machine. Virtually all adults, nobody follows the protocol. So everybody working out there has their mask on. They have a clean glass thing for you, different health classes where everybody's supposed to be six feet apart. They all have their masks off, they're all in one group, everybody's exercising. So even as adults, we can't seem to follow those rules. So we're gonna have kids who are not gonna stand on the little red dot. I mean, that's just gonna happen. How, to me, that's where addressing that on a day-to-day basis and how we address the parents is gonna be probably the most important thing as we go forward with it. So I wonder if you could just touch upon that.
Well, I think the diligence and the timeliness of, of that is gonna be important. And it, it's gonna require, from a student perspective, it's gonna require all of us to be involved and our, and our, our staff to, to address it and, and our, and for our staff to feel supported if we have students who aren't able to follow it or aren't following it, that administratively, um, there's support and resources that will, at, at some point, the students can't need it.
We, we've all seen the pictures of the Georgia High School where the kids were all in the class. I mean, there were lovely pictures that made it all over the internet. I'm sure somebody was waiting just for the right time, just the right angle to get that right. So we've seen that. So, uh, high schoolers, I think it's gonna be, you know, you address it, they don't pay attention. You and I talked about this, you're going home, you're going to e-learning, sorry, you know, thinking about it. I, I, I think kindergarten's first graders, second graders, third graders, it's a bit of a difference. It's a lot of redirections, a lot of, of reacquinging to what their, their situations are. So I'm curious just how we're gonna be addressing that. Cause I think from a perception basis, that's gonna be where the phone calls come in and that's where the emails come in, you know, all those kind of things. So, again, I'm just asking about that.
So we have, we have some visual supports, uh, to pre-teach students what to expect so that they can see, um, before they get here, um, plus with their parents and then also for students with significant disabilities. And we also have social stories. And it's gonna be like any other behavior. We're, we're gonna have to just constantly teach them. Because like you, you mentioned about the people that, they're young, you know, they need a lot of redirection. And that's why, you know, we try to keep our staffing ratio reasonable. Because if it's too many students per faculty member, it's just not possible to monitor student behavior. And in, we have to be very vigilant, in my opinion, in gassing periods, you know, possibly staring at them at times and being vigilant in the hallways.
Well, these, uh, behavioral processes, you're talking about people, they go out to the parents before school starts so that they can reinforce this at home before school starts?
They will.
Wonderful.
And to your point, Dr. Phil, in my discussions with the Y E A over the last couple of weeks, probably the number one area of concern is just that. And it's not even just with students, it's with their peers. Uh, there's a concern about people not following the rules. There's a concern about what are the protocols, how are we gonna enforce the protocols? Are we going to make sure that we're maintaining as safe as an environment possible?
Right. And I wanna make sure we're supporting the teachers who are trying to support that environment. So the worst thing we can do is to ask them to step forward and do this, which we are, and then not support them when they're trying to make this work. So I, I absolutely wanna make sure that we're doing everything we can to support that when they're going into this situation. I mean, again, I, I think we can anticipate there's gonna be problems. There's gonna be things that we're gonna have to act.
And we're, we're well aware that there are going to be those who are gonna be watching specifically for the indiscretions or indiscretions.
And we've had questions from staff or the union regarding, you know, will they be held accountable? Meaning like would there be, um, employee dis... Meaning like would there be, um, employee discipline if students, if they, obviously that wouldn't be the case unless it's total gross negligence, uh, which I don't expect. So, I mean, I think the more important part is pre-teaching, supporting our faculty.
And they likely are gonna have new ideas as, as kids start arriving to say, we should try something different that's more effective. And I think we have to be open to that, we have to learn to change and we have to provide the resources. When the resources are needed, they're what to do.
And, and some students may even have behavioral incentives, depending on, on, on their abilities.
I'm talking about the questionnaire.
Sure, I can't hook up to show, if you're wireless, but, um, so we have a, a questionnaire that um, is similar to what you fill out before you come here, um, to the meeting. But so we have a separate survey that pretty much matches, so it's separate meaning the responses go to a, a different section of the program for staff, for students and for visitors. The, the difference in the visitor, um, survey is that it asks the first and last name um, of the visitor so that we can track later, um, for information where the student's, um, information is connected to their parent's email address and then the staff is connected to their staff email address. Um, and so the survey will go out starting at five AM. Um, then it will be reset at six AM, reset at seven AM, and reset at eight AM um, to remind them to continually take it, if you take it, then it doesn't get sent. Um, the questions are, are, um, the typical questions, you have either a cough that is new or worse, means sore throat, extreme shortness of breath. Um, kind of goes down that, um, symptom, um, list of COVID symptoms. And then, um, if you recently, in the past 15 days, if you've recently met a close contact or cared for somebody with COVID-19. And then, um, if you click yes to any of those, the adminis-, so for the staff, the administrator of the building will automatically get an email that says you did not pass your, the staff member did not pass the symptom survey. And the staff member gives a red response that says you are not allowed, uh, you're not permitted to, um, enter the building and you need to contact your administrator immediately. For students, um, if a student has a, a negative response to the survey, the building nurse and the building administrators automatically get an email that says the student did not pass. And then the parents get an email and we're working on, um, linking it to the student's email address also. So the, the, you're permitted to enter the building with a giant green check goes to the students and the parents or you're not permitted with their red card. Um, and then in the, the response, it will give them guidelines to contact, um, the building nurse or the building administrator to, for their follow-up steps on how they can, um, return to school.
So one, one of the areas in the questionnaire, and that is part of the reason why I reached out to Dr. Phil today, it's really been a little bit of consternation for the staff. When you look at the symptoms, all of the symptoms are symptoms that that can be attributable, attributable to so many different potential illnesses. Uh, so one of the things that we've done with the questionnaire, and this has been through, uh, advice from a couple of different areas. You're looking, we would see the questionnaire, for example, when we talk about congested or running nose, by parentheses, it asks not related to allergies. And we're suggesting to staff members, if you have a condition, for example, if you have migraine headaches. So headaches is a daily, daily event for you. So if it's not outside the normal, uh, the norm, it may be important for you to have either a doctor's note or to identify that so that when you're an- answering these, you're not constantly answering yes. Cause if you do that, we're gonna have a lot of staff out, uh, for really unnecessary reasons. Yes, sir.
So after you guys sent me the email, I had five minutes and lunchtime, so I kinda did a bit of a dive on that. You know, the CDC recommends against this. They directly say they don't think students shouldn't be screened in the questionnaire. They say staff should, students should not. Um, they're very clear about it. I, um, okay, quote, "The CDC does not currently recommend universal symptom screening. Screenings all students case or twelve be conducted by school. Parents or caregivers should be strongly encouraged to monitor their children for signs of infectious illness over days. Students are restricted to school." So that's what they, um, so we're, we're going a little bit outside of the CDC's guidance.
We're also aligned with ISBE, which is aligned with IDPH.
That I don't know, I just like, I have a few minutes after you guys asked, I thought, well, let me just take a look to see what, what it says. Cause I agree, the symptom, it almost drives me crazy that they say nausea, vomiting, and then diarrhea. That is actually a very low percentage on COVID symptoms. I mean, it's very unusual. In fact, the CDC gives these long guideline charting of what is, uh, toilet paper thing, right? Um, so what we're supposed to ask, why they ask, and how it should be done, and they give a rationale for, for that. You know, I, I, if, if that's the one, okay. But then you're kinda stuck with that list of symptoms that comes up every single, every protocol, every time. Fever, cough, shortness of breath, fatigue, muscle or body, it's headache, loss of taste or smell, sore throat, congestion, nausea, vomiting. Um, so I don't see where you get around any of that. I agree with you, if someone has, uh, irritable bowel syndrome and they have diarrhea, that doesn't take them out of that. So I think there should be something on there that very specifically says chronic conditions don't matter. This is a new onset symptom.
Right.
We can definitely add that.
I would.
It's, it's easy, easy to.
Chronic conditions do not count. I mean, I, I can tell you, if I've seen a number of teachers over the past two weeks, from all different districts. I have allergies, I have allergies, and then I say cough, and then they say I can't go work. Irritable bowel syndrome comes up quite often, um, because of nausea, vomiting, and diarrhea. So it just has to be specified, this is new symptoms.
And I think if there's, you know, some of the, I guess, more concerning questions that I've received for the concerns from parents or from staff has been people not being completely honest with completing the morning survey. And that we're gonna have people that are, are gonna come to work when they have symptoms, true symptoms, or they're gonna send children. I think parents are fearful that are the parents, or staff are fearful that the parents.
What difference would that make for those students?
Correct.
Or manuals going around, or strep? I, I looked up all these statistics over the past two months. Believe me when I tell you that if you see the number of strep cases that lead to death for this age group, smarter, it's a scarier situation. Influenza, again, scary situation. People keep turning down their flu shots already this year, which I'm with my mind. But we already have that situation. I don't know that it's changed, like it's always gonna be there, whether or not it's COVID or any other things. We still have strep, we still have flu, we still have these illnesses, are here. So the, the questionnaire really, if anything, is going to hold out someone who has the flu.
Right, which, which is not necessarily bad. So, but just think of all, all these situations that have come up where people have had active COVID cases. When they had universally asking in place of proper mitigation, it was not strep. Or very little was strep. And, you know, people were very acute symptoms.
I, I work in COVID environment, all day, every day.
So you can survive that if you mitigate properly, alright? So, so every school that's opened up that's mitigated well, usually does a very nice job of this. And that's really the key. I mean, some kids are gonna come and sick, some teachers are gonna come and sick. And if you mitigate properly, you're really reducing their risk tremendously, as you all know. Schools that didn't do that, they had disastrous results. So, I mean, it, this falls on the responsibility of, of parent and, and.
As community.
As the entire community. Because, you know, I, I see kids, parents all the time that are really good with their kids, they got these kids wearing masks at three years old, and, and they're fine, you know? Other kids, they'd be a little older, they could be wearing a lot better, and the parents don't even bother wearing masks. And those are the ones that don't wanna wear masks. This is because it's a community issue, and we have to be very, very firm, uh, you really follow the rules. If you wanna be here, that's great. If you don't follow the rules, you will not be allowed to be here. And that's gotta just be crystal clear before anybody.
My reason, as I sent you the email this weekend, driving dogs, uh, in front of Oswego High School on Saturday, every one of the fields was full. When I say full, there were teams waiting to play, there was teams warming up, there was on soccer fields, they were everywhere. There was not a mask to these.
Maybe they're all sad.
Yeah, so Oswego High School, the Oswego school system were right there on their property, are not gonna be a holy school. But we filled those fields with families and kids who were interacting on a, on a basis.
There was a lot of that.
A lot of mixed messages.
But that is the recommendation, strongly recommend, of the highest state board of education, I think, I think.
So we're ju-, we're juggling the different guidelines.
So we have, um, from our last conversation, we really follow, um, is being IDPH and consider CDC, but you know, we really go with the IDPH guidelines. Um, and so to, to kind of finish with the student questionnaire, there will be staff, um, stationed at specific doors of every single building, um, monitoring the students as they enter. Um, looking in our system at the dashboard to see who has completed the survey and who has not. If they have not completed, there is a sep- separate area for the student to, to go to complete that. If they, the, to go to complete the daily health questionnaire. If a parent is dropping them off, we will check the parent's device before the student gets out of the car to, to know that their, um, daily health questionnaire was submitted and approved so that the parent does not leave and we got the child here. Um, some of the buildings, um, to speed up the flow of traffic, um, in the parent drop-off line have secured some parking spaces. So if the parents have not submitted it, they can pull into a parking space, submit it, and then go back through the line and drop their students off. Um, at the, you know, older grade levels, the students will be able to show on their own device that they have submitted their symptom questionnaire with the giant green check as they enter the building. So the staff will have to search, um, the database as they're entering. If, um, students, um, are there and their parents are out there and they do not pass the symptoms, um, the daily health questionnaire, they will be escorted to the, the sick waiting area and a parent will, um, come and pick them up.
We have this questionnaire also in tablet form, so it would be easily, so they go to website. Okay, so they go to district website, call, call it out right there from the website as well?
Yes, so there, a link is sent directly to, um, the contacts on the student's e-school. So a direct link that is connected to the student. But if they do not have that link, they can just scan a QR codes. We have a student QR code, a staff QR code, and a visitor QR code. They can just scan a QR code and submit it.
Those are the same protocols we think about, uh, when we have deliveries or we have vendors coming in or we have any of our outside visitors, which we're minimizing, but we're gonna have people obviously coming into our buildings. Same protocol is gonna happen for them.
Doctor's office, so. I made it sound like.
So today when we were all, we were all going in the stairway. When we were a little less than six feet apart in the stairwell.
See, we were good about that, we actually spaced people a little bit down on the stairs.
Uh, we only have forty people in the big room. And it will be as challenging, if not more challenging, when we have something occur in the school.
Next thing.
Right, it's, but, you know, the contact tracing, you know, the, you know, the, the quick decisions, the relocation of kids, communication to our families, um, so it's something that, you know, certainly we're gonna, we're gonna work through. Uh, we have a protocol for it, we have procedures in place that we'll, we'll share with staff. Um, birthing, um, when they come back, um, but it's, you know, unfortunately, we'll probably have to deal with it.
Well, that's why we have universal ESG, and Fauci was on again today, you know? Things are gonna happen, but if you have your most, on the ESG, your, your odds are gonna be all. And I think everybody pretty much agrees with it. England is about just devastated, three hundred thousand kills. You know, a lot of cases were all from home, not from school. So it, it, it can be done. Um, I agree Americans are difficult, but it, it's just, you have to be the way it is. But when we make this work, people are gonna follow the rules. And I don't think we say that enough times, because you have to understand if they don't follow the rules, they will not be able to, period. That's it. No matter what, they're a philosophy, political ideology, all of them.
So substitutes will follow the same protocol. Um, all of our visitors, substitutes are, for the day, will have waders on. Um, we are going to, uh, take those waders every night. We, we do a load of, of towels and such in, in the washer. So we're putting on the waders in a bag, um, that will be washed every evening and dried out for the next day. So it will be washed and disinfected, um, to be handed out the next day. Um, our buses, uh, we're working through the, uh, the routes right now. Uh, the protocols are in place for the buses, we got extra masks on buses. So if you guys answer without masks, we'll have to disclose the message on buses.
Well, it's pretty hard to be guessing with these little messages that pop up on the screen.
Are there questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, someone thought we had a Q and A.
Alright, well, it's, it's like a, sure, we have two of them there, right?
Actually, more.
We have more.
I have one. We can stop for a Q and A. All right, we got Lisa on the line. Can you hear Lisa?
Just hear them.
You can stop sharing. Can I do a chat?
Lisa, can you hear us? Lisa?
Hello, nice to meet you.
All right, we'll go to this hall. Or Mrs. Hurd?
Is she here? Yeah, it's, yeah.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
You can hear me?
Yeah.
I just, I have a question about the special needs children with the mask protocol. What will be the consequences for a special needs child who just absolutely can't keep the mask on at all times?
Could you repeat the question?
Special needs child can't keep the mask.
What's it do with a special needs child not keeping the mask on?
Well, you know, again, like we, we try to teach the child, um, you know, they have very unique needs sometimes. And so that's why we have social stories and things like that. Um, depending on how long they might be able to keep the mask on, we might schedule breaks with certain children. And then if they have this unique medical condition, then we'll, we'll, um, have their physician fill out a form. And there could be some exceptions to a face shield, et cetera. So, you know, if you have specific concerns, what I would recommend is you could contact me, Pete Marcello, and you can kind of review what they are.
Next, we use supply lists.
We, we don't have separate supply lists for hybrid and, um, face-to-face, full-time, those are the same. What I do recommend for parents that have students that are e-learning is to look at the supply list and if there's something on there that you don't think that you need in your home, like, uh, for example, there might be, uh, additional wipes or Kleenex or those types of things, that we would not need to purchase those if you're an e-learning student.
Have staff members who don't feel comfortable going back to school, will give the option to be an e-learning teacher? Will the e-learning teachers need to report to the building?
The e-learning teachers do not need to report to the building, they can, um, do so remotely. Um, we have been able to honor all of our medical exempt personnel um, and have them put in a situation where they, um, have first preference or priority to be our e-learning teachers.
I think part of the question might be for the, um, public news institutions for providing training.
If they're, if they do not want to be an institute date, or for a medical reason, they cannot be, or then we've asked them to please contact, and work it through with their building principal. We'll still be expected to, uh, participate and have the material, and, uh, that was, that was generated, but, um, my, my communication to the staff is to work with the building level principal. Um, and I, if there are other staff members who would want it to be e-learning that are not, I'm sure there are, yes. Uh, but in order to meet all the student needs from a hybrid, uh, onsite, as well as e-learning, we can, uh, honor that for everybody. Um, lockers, um, at the high school and the middle school.
By request.
They'll be by request, parent request, they'll work through the high school administration, and they have a process. and they have a process they're going to be following. At the elementary, they're going to be working with each of the grade levels to do a standard locker usage, so that they can maintain social distancing. If they don't feel that that's able to be done, then they're going to, they'll work at the building level at that grade level to work through the locker situation. We do not have any high school pictures of a high school classroom setup. If you remember the classroom sizes with high school?
It is going to be approximately fifty percent. Yeah, no more than nineteen.
Eighteen, we did set the classes up, we just didn't get a picture taken.
So there will be no more than eighteen at high school. What happens when there's a child sent to school while they're sick? What actions will be taken?
Sorry, I was trying to get into the questions. If a student attends school while they are ill, they will be sent to the nurse's office, and before they enter that healthy waiting area for the nurse's office, they will be asked a specific set of questions about their symptoms. And if they have any of the COVID-19 symptoms, they will be taken to the sick waiting area, and parents will be contacted to pick up their child and take them home and give them guidance on what the next steps are as to how to return back to school.
Going back to the question about the high school, we just got confirmation that class sizes will be no more than twenty.
Do you want to talk about how it can be traumatic for a child and what resources would be available?
So I think that some students have experienced either anxiety or trauma with this whole COVID experience starting way back early in March. And so we provided support then and will continue to provide support now. We've tried to identify certain students who, who needed extra support in the spring so that we can continue and follow up with them in, in, in the beginning of the school year. In addition, we have a host of resources that we're sharing with families on the signs and symptoms of trauma based on age and development, and the same thing for our staff. So actually, in one of our first department meetings, our principals and our student services administrators will review that with staff, and it will also be in our staff playbook. And so we're anticipating that some students will have experienced trauma, we're prepared to support them.
You want to test the Spanish part?
Yeah, well, I mean, it's a question, right? So the problem is unless you can translate the whole thing, do you translate all the slides?
That's what it was.
Well, that's what they want to know, will it all be only English? Or can you translate the slides as well?
Okay.
Yeah, I think so. So, so, but who could they call or be able to help me?
Christine.
Christine. Okay. So, where do you mark Christine?
There's a question about the financial risk of one child dies from COVID. I think it's horrific if any child dies of anything, or if a staff member would get ill or dies, just like any other given year. And I also think would be, I know I've talked to their superintendents, I've talked to their districts, who they are equally as worried about not sending kids back and having kids and adolescents at home by themselves, and the mental health that's causing them, and their concern about the rate of suicide to go up. So I consider to tell you, as a superintendent, there's, there's, there's nothing more devastating than the loss of a, of a child or a staff member, or a spouse, or your own, own children, or your, your own brother or sister. So there is no amount of dollars that we can put on the life of a teen. It doesn't mean, though, that we're making a poor decision about coming back to school or allowing parents to make the choice to come back to school, or trying to educate kids.
Those risks would be a lot for you.
Correct.
There's risks in every decision we make.
Correct.
Every decision we make has risks. And we're allowing our parents to make. Is that still there?
Did you answer that first name, so they can just call Christine? You can type it in, right?
Uh, I can. I answered it live.
Melinda, can you type?
Yes.
Yeah. Want to just type that in? Yeah, P U E D E. No, no, that one, that's a shit. So that one there is type your answer in. What a type answer. And P U E D E, space, double L, A M A R. Christina Electra. And then put the phone. Double A, M A R.
Nick, there's a question about transportation for e-learning students. You want to come in for our, about this?
So e-learning students, they can select their special, that will also be virtual, so there will not be any onsite attendance for special or core for e-learning students.
What phone number?
Christina, Christina, what phone number to call you?
I have an email that just came up.
Okay, so your email?
We're also continuing to work with our food service company. I don't, we, you're, have an update on where we are with food services. For Mike, sorry.
Yeah, so Mindy and Michelle Bryant have done a wonderful job with the food service transition team, and so there isn't much left over. But right now, we are working with principals to finalize any final adjustments to their proposed lunchtimes, and we are therefore providing that to Airmark, who are working along with them.
That's correct.
And we are, we are also working with Airmark to finalize our pickup lunches next Tuesday for our pre-released families who are e-learning, so we're trying to set that up and have that ready to go for those families as well. So everything going up?
There's a question about staff receiving the protocols on Thursday. Is that going to, is that true, Melinda? This Thursday, institute date?
Yes.
And how will they receive the information?
Yes, there will be a presentation at each of the buildings pertaining to health and wellness, including all of the COVID-19 information.
I think they're talking about the screening survey with them that day.
Oh, yes, the Faltris daily health questionnaire will be sent to them via email the morning of August thirteenth, and it comes from an email address with the information of Faltris as the postman. It will start at 5:00 AM.
You want to keep trying to answer some of these questions as we continue on?
Yes.
Is that okay? More work to do.
Yeah, let's, let's.
So from a cleaning and supplies, Heather and her team, there's been a lot of questions about what we have available on site. Do we have all the materials here? Do we have PPE? You'll see it when I get to it in a second. So you can see on the right-hand side, the staff can be given masks and windshield requested, district purchase one, the state provided others to us, ISBD did. I'm assuming that all of our staff as a belt, since March, have at least seven or two, in addition to what we will provide. We need to provide more later in the year. We'll certainly look into that, we're going to do that. Each of our schools will have a UVC mobile light that will be able to go into the buildings for a ten or fifteen minute disinfectant. Obviously, no staff members or kids will be in the room that happens. We'll have the door, we'll have a sign on the door, we don't enter, and such, and lock so that that can happen. We can use that during the day, and certainly at nighttime for deep cleaning, that will be used. And then you can see the number of different PPEs that we have on, on site. Our highly custodians, cleaning schedules are created for each of the schools. The bathrooms will have hourly cleanings with signage, no one using rooms for cleaning. The last thing we've done, much like when you go to, let's say, an elevator, or you see at a restaurant. And at each of our schools, we've identified zones for playgrounds and recess. We'll be putting markers and cones out every morning so that groups of kids can be outside for recess or classes, and then separated into their different large groups throughout the school. On the next page, you'll see basically what, some of the things we have on hand. All the schools will, will have a supply, and we will, we order a year of cleaning and disinfectant, and we don't feel we'll run out anytime soon. And certainly, as we get into the school year, if we find we need more, we certainly have vendors and access to those, and certainly now more so than other places, because schools are, all of them going into session face-to-face, some of the other things are more available to us if needed. But this, these are materials that we started ordering at the beginning of June in anticipation of, you're going to be in for a while.
And just from an academic preparedness standpoint, I alluded to this earlier, we have, are working through with our tech department, a scheduled Chromebook distribution for first, second, and third grade families, for them to pick up their device prior to the start of school. Those dates that are listed there on the screen are the same dates that we have our staff training scheduled for, for those five days as well. We'll have two evening options within that five-day period for families that worked during the day or couldn't make it to the high school academy during the day. And then I've listed there just a few different professional development that we have created for staff when they return on August thirteenth. Some of those resources that are listed are new, specific to these educational models that we are allowing families to choose from. And also, like I mentioned at the board working session in our last meeting, they are training on interdisciplinary units that needs to take place, and so we have that planned and scheduled. And we also have a group at the high school that has been working on developing some lesson plan templates for an e-learning environment and for Canvas, and also with creating Canvas guidelines that have very clear expectations for staff members.
And from a communication standpoint, you see on the right, we sent out the standard schedule to our, our families and our staff last week. You'll see today, the certified staff assignments were shared. The non-certified will be shared by the, by the twelfth. You think about your instructional age, your current professionals. Our staff also will be receiving their class posters, as we have now finalized, obviously, the models and the teacher assignments. Excited to have our staff arriving this week for the institute date on the thirteenth. And then we're going to have a series of communications that are going out to our families on the fourteenth, both from our, the homeroom teacher, but also from building, the initial building communication. You know, as we start talking about the preparedness and the reminder about masks, and talking about what masks are, that you're allowed to wear and how to wear them properly, things that it can do to start getting their child ready, if they are going to be attending school on site, but also for those e-learning families, what to expect with, when the first day comes for, for our e-learning. I think it's really, really important as a district, both from a teacher standpoint and a student standpoint, that we don't focus everything on just our in-person students. We have, we have a lot of kids and families who are learning from home. And that's, and a lot of our staff is going to need support as either of the teachers. So it's, it's going to be a concerted effort to support all of our students and all of our families and all of our staff in this. So communication's going out, then to our parents again next week, as we prepare for the first day, and then on the seventeenth, our bus routes will be posted till we come today. Christine's been very busy, our principals have been very busy getting, getting ready. As I shared all along, this is not easy. It hasn't been an easy decision for me to make the recommendation to the board. I know it hasn't been an easy decision for the board to, to pursue the support, because there's a lot of factors. As I've talked to other health professionals, some that are very close to me as family members, others in the community, others outside of the community, if this was only about science, as someone told me, it would, it would be an easier decision, because then it's, then we'd all be doing the same thing across the country, every community, but it's not just, that certainly science is a huge part of this, but there's other things that we can do, and there's other ways in which, and all the factors that impact our decision. And all of our stakeholders are part of that decision. So I, certainly my recommendation wasn't just thinking about one group of stakeholders, and it's not easy. I, I, it's, it's just like it weighs on our staff, just like it weighs on our families and our kids, it weighs on me too, and I know it weighs on this board. And we have a tremendous responsibility to this community, to all the members of the community, staff, students, and our, and our parents. So we are going to work really hard, and we're going to, we're going to, there's going to be things that we're going to, we're going to say, you know what? We got to learn from this, or there's going to be, you know, procedures that we're going to have to remake. For our, I mean, we, we just, we, we haven't done this before as an educational system. And frankly, from a, from a state board perspective, they've given guidance, but they've given a lot of local control, which we are setting in place the procedures, the protocols, and it's, as this board has said tonight, and we've all said all along, it needs to be a community effort. Everybody has to play a part to make it successful. I'll ask the board if there's any questions you have, any comments, any concerns?
I have a comment that would be, I could hear every day. Parents want the kids back at school. That's what parents want, that's what people are saying. And I will also say that, you know, I, my practice has multiple districts that are involved, and I can't say more. I'm so proud of our district. People have, I just today, someone from one of the local districts, you guys have to stay strong so that the wave of not going back to school won't keep moving further west. I, again, I congratulate you guys, I congratulate you for all the work you've done, you know, listening, that we've accommodated all of our teachers that needed appropriate accommodation. These things are amazing. The work that you guys have done is absolutely mind-blowing. So again, I congratulate all you guys for you've done, you've made, frankly, you've made our community very happy, I think, that you've done what people are asking us to do, and I'm very proud to be a part of that.
Again, it's not easy on our staff. And I, and I.
It's not easy on you guys.
And I, and I know that, and our staff has been, to get us to this point, the support of our staff, and it doesn't mean they're, they're happy with the decision, it doesn't mean they're not anxious, they're not scared, but our union has been supportive, the union leadership has, has been supportive, and, and I mean supportive, and they've asked hard questions, you know? Some staff members have, have, you know, directly pointed things at me, you know, and, and my, my intentions behind the decision, and, and, and again, it hasn't been easy, but I can tell you that I'm coming at this from the purest sense. I care about our staff as much as I care about our kids and I care about our community. I'm a community member. You, some of you have kids that are, that are going through our schools right now. I have students going through our schools right now, so none of us take it lightly. So none of us take it lightly. And we will continue to understand and be mindful of the perspective that our staff are bringing to their jobs and when they walk on on campus in the next few days. And we have to be open to listen, we have to be open to concerns, we have to be open to new ideas or resources that they may need, that we haven't identified yet.
And those two task force that you're setting up will help help those those discussions happen kindly every day. Obviously, you can drop some, obviously, and so. Do we have other Q and A's that we need before we move on?
So that top one, I've got two grandkids that are in local daycare. Yeah, I will say that they learned the same type of issues that we discussed here, nothing different. But interestingly, they haven't been able to stop for a while, and nobody's taken it from them. So, and I would say, they had, they're dealing with two-year-olds, newborns, and it's either tougher. So if that's any kind of a history at all, that should go along.
We do not, we do not have a picture, we we have the middle schools and classrooms set up, some are core classroom. You know, there's there's classrooms in the middle school that have twenty-five seats, and they're six feet apart. You know, so, and as I've looked through the research, I've done as much reading as I can find as far as capacities in a space. It's been fifty or less, as long as we can, where we, as much as possible, maintaining social distancing. You know, I think if a, an emergency comes up, we're gonna have to, you know, we're gonna have drills, we're gonna have more drills than we typically do. We'll probably have two a quarter, which is more than, you know, whether it's bus evacuation, run ahead fight, tornado. But again, at some point, the health and legality of a of an emergency, it would be like if we're in a lock, a lockdown with a run-ahead fight drill. In the end, we have to say, what's a greater risk? And we're gonna, and and I believe, if we're in a lockdown, the greater risk is that we're gonna hide in a situation in a run-ahead fight than worry about the the COVID- nineteen, at least from an initial perspective. How will the bus school work for students that are attending regular school hours? Bus routes will be shared as they are every year next week on the seventeenth. So we will, we'll talk about drop-off times and pickup times. So families will be notified if they're going to school all day, or or even for the the high bed, if they're, if it's a morning pickup or an afternoon drop-off, we will be able to communicate with our families next week.
The bottom question, I think, is a very legitimate one, I've heard this one twice already today. So my understanding is if they can't wear, we ask them not to wear. Is that correct?
So the question is, so people can't see it, will parents be notified if their student is in a classroom with a student that is exempt from wearing a mask? Be your own
Well, there there will be, just to get to that point, there will be students, who potentially, not, not a lot of students, who potentially might be coming to school without a shield or a mask, depending on their medical condition. And we will make sure that, you know, in this form, that the physician fills out. The requirement is that they also have to fill out a release, so that our nurse or our man or our administration can talk to them and come up with a help plan. Now, will families be notified of that? No, no, they won't necessarily be notified.
Well, so those children will be in classes, normal classes, with all the rest of the kids that are working.
That's correct.
I would say that depending on the the reason that the child has a mask exemption, you know, looking at the the diagnosis, the diagnoses that would allow students not to wear a mask, the majority of them will be behavioral or possibly sensory needs. And so most of those students couldn't receive services in our program, rather than fully in the gym and gymnasium. But there may be times where they would push into a gym and gymnasium.
I, I think it's really important to note that we anticipate that will be a handful of students at the most.
Not many diagnoses.
Right. It's very rare.
Their behavior.
It's very rare.
Yeah, I understand that, although if they're bad sensory, those are, you're gonna give a regular classroom.
Well, that's kind of what Pauline was alluding to, and that, you know, that applies to staff as well. And again, I think that that would be a might really rare situation. But we did vet this with our attorneys, age clerk, and, you know, individuals with certain medical conditions that are going to certain accommodations.
We will have to work through each individual, and with the class, you know, the unique situation, to determine as far as what the communication protocol can and will be.
There's a distancing issue, there's special barriers, you know, I don't know. Because, because they have, they have
Yep.
will set some barriers up.
I understand, and I I don't disagree with that.
So I, so I didn't, the the statement here would be, we won't look at, you know, a special environment for that class, if they really be, be in that class.
What what we're finding is, at least from from my experience, as far as the people who anticipated getting their children different waivers, their their physicians aren't providing them. For example, they, you know, I've had people say, you know, my child has asthma, and, you know, and they, and they anticipated getting a waiver, and the physician didn't provide.
Okay, all right, so I've heard a rare occasion that there truly is a situation, which as you said, is mainly behavioral, there would be accommodations made to protect the other students in a classroom if they happen to be in one of those. The effort statement?
Well, you know, certainly look social distance, certainly, you know, if it's possible to use plexiglass in front of, you know, it's not a perfect solution.
No, no, no.
But it's better than nothing potentially. I mean, I'm not sure, potentially. And so, you know, we'll do our best to provide some protection to the other students.
Well, you know, we're looking at alternate, alternate mitigating strategies would be the way to work.
Yeah, I think we'll look at alternating mitigating research-based strategies, whatever they are.
That's fair enough, I think that we should say that, so. Right.
We will have a plan before this occurs, for each unique situation that comes up.
That's important, I agree.
And the plan will be communicated, the follow-up will be communicated with.
And and the plan will be developed with that, with that child's position. So we're not just gonna take a blanket statement without vetting it with that child's position.
But her question really was, will will a parent know?
When it's really not information that we could share.
You can share, yeah, I get that, so, but but I think if they know what the policy would be, and how it would be mitigated, that's gonna be helpful.
But I do think that if 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 their child is old enough to speak, they they possibly could go home and help their parent.
Hopefully, they will, I'm sure.
So why do I think we're a mask, Joe, Joe was a very, well, yes. I think it's really important to say that we we do not anticipate a lot of students in this situation. We really don't.
Well, I think Dr. Crystal made the statement correctly, if we can't provide proper mitigation, then we just can't provide the service here. Yeah, then then we can't have this decision here on site. And that's, I think that's, you know, we will make every effort to do that. But if for some reason it's just not possible, and I can imagine a few, then, then we, we, you know, if we're talking about universal testing and and protection and mitigation, you can't just say, okay, in this case, what am I gonna do?
I understand, but like if you look at ISB's guidelines of returning to school, there are some exceptions, which includes, you know, children under two, and they obviously get a little quiet of us, but there are some, some very rare exceptions.
Okay, but again, we should have alternative mitigating.
I think we're in agreement on that, yeah.
We will create a plan, we will work with a team of individuals, including our physicians, whatever involvement the other educators or the student has. We will obviously stay with the families a lot, and then protect the health and safety.
Right.
Then every weekend.
Absolutely, it's doable, it's just gonna take some extra work.
Yep.
I, I'll make an analogy to a student, you know, sometimes we work with students who are aggressive. You know, we use mitigating measures to protect other students, I think it's kind of an analogy situation.
I, I would agree, I think that is a legitimate situation. Right. Thank you.
Do you want to keep answering, or do you want us to keep going curious, or?
No, I think we got, we guess they're
Next, Chromebooks for all first through third graders, or just those instructor remote?
For all, Chromebooks are for all students, and also that Chromebook pickup that I mentioned earlier will be for all new students to District 115.
Notification will be going out for pickup tomorrow morning, for parents who will be receiving that. What happens with e-learning students that have EOLA?
I don't really know what that question is getting at, but are e-learning students who will participate in English language arts virtually?
Hybrid classes are only four days a week at Ask?
Hybrid classes are at the kindergarten through eighth grade level, or excuse me, first grade through eighth grade level every day. The high school hybrid model is two days in person and two days remote.
What's on that? What's the question?
It's a question, it's a question. So if I have to break, keep going, I've got to roll back the phases, or close, whatever the plan is to, for a student to be about transportation, especially needs. Well, if you have to close the school, there won't be any transportation.
Yeah, if we go back to full remote learning, there will not be any transportation. We would have to look at the program in which we would provide, you know, would there be an opportunity for a certain amount of kids to come on site for a period of time for specialized programming? And obviously, if we allowed that, then we would, as a district, provide transportation.
Maybe the question also, if things start to come up, if there's another surge, if there's increase, we're preparing for that as well. We're gonna be, we're gonna be flexible, we're we're planning for that.
Contingency plans are
Contingency plans are gonna be, if there is these things and things do start, we're preparing for that as well. This is all part of what we're doing.
Class rosters will stay the same, so if we move from face-to-face hybrid into a full remote, the students, the teachers they have now are the teachers they'll have in remote.
So we're gonna get the last question at the bottom, then we should move on, and so, I would say that's yes.
So students that are e-learning will be on the same grading scale as those on-site, that's correct.
That is correct.
And the curriculum will be the same.
That is correct.
Um, the learning and grading plan.
And so, as we discussed in in previous meetings, I had an opportunity to review and evaluate the hard learning and grading plan and our model, and talk with our our teaching learning department. I had a conversation with their curriculum coordinating council members, who was the initial group that generated the plan years ago. Our high school and middle school administrators. We've also discussed, and and our belief is that we need to start looking and thinking differently about how we're holding students accountable, how we can increase student engagement in our coursework. And in those discussions, and with that in mind, we have a few recommendations that we would like to discuss here tonight, and then potentially bring to the board for a vote next board meeting. One of those is that the the core tenants of the learning and grading plan will remain the same with regards to retakes and relearning, and we believe that that was very important. We also believe that our staff has done a lot of work on using formative assessment effectively to help help the learning process. We also discussed too, that, and this was lessons that we learned in the fourth quarter during the e-learning phase. And in that quarter, we had a lot more stringent restrictions that the state put on us with regards to grading, and those are different now. And so our belief is to add in an assignment category into the checkpoint percentage. And so recommending that assignments and learning activities that can happen outside of class would also then be allowed to be included into the student grade, up up to fifteen percent of that category. So effectively, we're adding in assignments and increasing the percentage from ten percent of checkpoints to fifteen percent. Our belief is that although, from a purist standpoint, we believe that students should learn for its intrinsic value, however, in practicality, sometimes our students need some extrinsic motivation as well. And so we also had added in there too, that we need to clearly define deadlines for the teachers and students to return those assignments, if we're going to include those in the grade. And so, from a philosophy standpoint, it still supports our learning and grading plan mentality. But with these additions, we believe we can have a better chance to hold our kids accountable for their engagement in all three environments, hybrid, e-learning, and in full-time based classes. And so that's our recommendation. We'd like to open it up for any thoughts or discussions from the board.
I think, I I think this is a wise move, especially for engagement purposes and student accountability purposes. But again, too, I think it's it's really pertinent that our teachers remain accountable with their feedback, with their reasonable amount of time for for grading being returned to the students, and with some meaningful feedback, not just for completion, hey, here's a check, you completed this, but here's what you did well, here are areas where you could improve upon, so that you can take this information and transfer it to the next set of assignments, or to the next formative, or to the next summative. So it 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 does put a a greater burden on our teachers, and I understand that. I think that accountability is really essential.
Would agree, and I, I think too, the, now that we're using Canvas to its full potential, it'll offer us a way in order to monitor that. And certainly from a, from a teacher's perspective, using Canvas will be more effective, but it'll also be more efficient for grading as well, and I I think it's a win-win.
When you, when you tighten up those plans, could you share them? I know Dr. Schumacher, this is something that we've been advocating for
Yeah, certainly, we see those. And the professional development.
Just what, because presence, teacher presence is so important. It doesn't have to be a grade, that presence and that feedback. And in an e-learning environment, you know, you talk about trauma, you're teaching through trauma and unprecedented times.
Absolutely.
That presence is really important. So once you figure out those expectations, can you share them with the with the Student Success Committee?
Absolutely.
I know you have to have them, I know they'll be part of the five-day plan. Because teaching, e-learning, teaching is exhausting.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, it's, it adds a lot to a teacher's plate, and we understand it, but it, accountability is really important.
And we were lucky enough that the high school team that was working on academics this this summer was putting together guidelines for, for Canvas, and those are still being embedded, but I'll certainly share those with the Student Success Committee.
Absolutely.
One of those speak complete next.
By the
When when will these guidelines be complete?
By the thirteenth.
By the thirteenth, so one mistake.
Third, Thursday.
The other, the other thing I I would just like to add is, when we talk about reasonable timelines for returning those grades and meaningful feedback to those grades, obviously, I I think it's pertinent information for for teachers to understand that there are different disciplines that may require a little bit additional time. I mean, as a there are different disciplines that may require a little bit additional time. I mean, as an English teacher, for example, I'm teaching a, uh, grading a ten to fifteen-page research paper, my expectations to get a, get an assignment grade and return to a class of twenty students is not gonna be the same probably as someone who's teaching math and, and maybe the assignment just isn't as heavy. So I think that reasonableness is key. You could just stress that to your teachers that, you know, there are timeframes, but sometimes there are exceptions.
Yeah. Well, the length of the assignment too, I feel like my place, I totally agree. That's why it's, it's hard to just say hard and fast, this is the number.
Right.
Uh, because there are so many different variables that come into play.
There are, absolutely. I think this is a really good plan. I think it, I think it will, will certainly uh, make the economy, accountability for both the teaching and learning process better. Uh, one thing that we don't necessarily get out of this, at least at this point, is a, a, a real strong understanding of equity.
Yes.
And I, I think this is something that we need to continue to work on.
I agree.
It's, it's, it's really essential as well.
I agree. And that'll, that'll take a lot of training, sure, research on our behalf as well.
Absolutely.
Um, but I do think it's paramount to keep that before.
Given the circumstances though, I think what we've done here, what you've done here is, is really terrific, and we'll just keep working towards greater equity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, any other committee information, Mark, it's? Alright, um, moving on to operational excellence and the health system and hardware.
Nope, I'm, you can do that page?
Those are all bids.
What's that?
These, these are all bids. You know, look at all these and then, you know, the cost, what it costs. I'm just curious, at the end of that period of time, is there a trade-in value on stuff?
I don't know that question. What do you answer to that question?
Um, I can find out.
I don't know the amount, I should, I assume there is. Typically, it's not very much.
Well, it depends. You know, it, I'm just curious, because there is no indication we got any credit for our old system is. I mean, I know it's old, but it isn't like antivillain, you know? So I, I was just wondering if, if, um, we build in some kind of a trade-in percentage value, at least so in the end, we would have an idea, because what is it, it's like roughly sixty-eight thousand bucks for hardware?
Right.
And so, you know, if you got technical center back, granted, they could just build that into the cost, but at least, you know.
Sixty.
Yeah, and, and this is a world, this is a very legitimate property, so if they made a commitment, I think they would stick with it. We usually deal with that.
We do.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars, or millions actually on one one.
I guess my, um, my dear picture, I mean, you know, most systems are moving to where the voice is on the computer, and the voicemail comes through the email. So I'm wondering why we are purchasing expensive devices unless they're gonna be for conference to, um, capabilities where we're gonna be doing some sort of, where you need the conference phone. I mean, you're seeing investment in, in conference phones, but most voice now is happening through, through your computer, because it's just voicemail for the teacher.
Yeah.
Unless you're.
We do have the ability to have our voicemail sent to our email, and we, we have them using that function.
So the phone is?
Well, the phone system, what happens is, is it's unserviceable. It's unserviceable. So you, it, it just happens all over. You can't support it. And so when it starts to break down, you still need a phone, you know, for emergency service.
Ninety-one, nine, for sure.
Okay, because every room has to have.
Every room has to have. So that's where, that's.
An emergency communication.
I, what you're saying is true. You're not really gonna use it for that.
Okay, you're using it for emergency purposes.
I get that.
And there are some of the phones that are listed in here, that's what a side car is. Those are phones that are for, um, like office personnel or staff that has the, um, separate, uh, ability to make transfers and hold lines and then those types of things. And so those are still, um, needed.
Come on.
Is this a pilot?
No.
No.
This is very, very soon at the next meeting. They're just presenting it. We can move this away.
Well, we'd like to do it approved at the next meeting.
Yeah, right.
And then have a, we're, we're not gonna get support for our system anymore.
And if you're not that able to comply, it's enhanced.
So if we have a malfunction, we're in trouble.
Yeah, and we don't.
Understand.
Okay, anything else under committee operational excellence? Uh, moving on to community of learners, and we have some personal work.
Uh, the first one up, as they're going to talk about it, I did mention it earlier. When we are going through the staffing component, we anticipate a potential need for three additional FTE to spread between the elementary buildings. So actually, later in the board meeting, we'll be asking for approval to be able to build these FTE if we have the need for it.
You're gonna ask for that approval tonight?
Yes, sir. Only because by the time the next board meeting comes around, we're.
We gotta, unless it's got to us. On the tech support issue.
Okay, one of the things with the, um, with our Director of Technology being out on, on a leave, we're looking to provide additional supports for the technology department, uh, with some leadership and, and decision-making. So we're looking to add a part-time duty, uh, that we would allow some others, some current employees to take on, uh, for the, uh, for the remainder of this week. We're looking at approximately a hundred fifty dollars per day for approximately four to six weeks.
And then we have bilingual nail services secretary.
In the area of bilingual nail services, in the past, that position has been ten months and moved to eleven months. We've now moved it to a twelve-month position for the coordinator for those services. In addition to that, we're finding this individual is doing more and more translation, translating services. Uh, so we, we feel it's, it's time to move this to a full-time position in order, in, in order to support that department and to support the movement.
And this was a part-time position, now it's going to be a full-time position?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, what's the total annual salary?
Uh, we're anticipating it to be an additional thirteen thousand over what they currently do.
What's the, what's, where are they at now?
Uh, approximately twenty-five thousand is about the cost that we're seeing with the technical. Is there not, they're not at halftime? They're somewhere more than that, plus there's been additional time sheets that have been printed to do transitions.
Alright, and on to fall athletic participation, and there's athletic and athletics at the curriculum stipend for twenty twenty-one.
Alright, so on this one.
Yeah, Luke's, Luke's gonna jump in on this. We, we started a, um, co-corrector committee to review, uh, how we can apply this for this school year. We come up with a variety of different signals or, or different discussion items. Uh, but a lot of this feeds off of information that Luke can provide us, as to what the seasons from the end look like and where we're at right now.
I'll jump in and, uh, give you a short update on where we're at with fall sports. I know Tim shared the, uh, guidelines from the IHSA. Um, well, first, thanks for the support of the summer camps. Over the last seven weeks, we had about nine hundred kids participate um, in our social distance summer camps, and it was a really different but positive experience for our kids. Um, so thank you for, for all the help with that. Um, last week, the IHSA Board of Directors approved a plan where all sports were gonna be played in the high school water bubble, um, over four shortened seasons, um, and that's the fall, winter, spring, and then even in the next summer, um, depending on how well the state's doing. So we're gonna be offering boys' and girls' golf, boys' and girls' cross-country, and girls' tennis, um, both started today. Uh, swimming is also permitted, um, however, we co-op with IMSA. IMSA is fully remote and not open to any of their facilities. So we're looking at grounds where our, our swimmers get by. I swam last year, we have about that same number this year. And at a minimum, we'd like to put them into a, a conference meet or a state meet if they were to happen. So, uh, that's where we're at with the swimmers. Um, scheduling is much different, um, with the state allowing us to only schedule contests within our COVID region for our conference. Um, we dropped all of our opponents that were in DuPage, DuCal, even Kane County, they're outside our conference. Um, we have picked up some more local teams like Plano, um, or good sandwiches possibly gonna be added, um, but we're staying within our, our COVID region or county. Um, events will be much smaller, um, obviously to keep the number down, it's the safest way to, to host an event. So if you imagine a cross-country meet, it's typically huge. Um, they're gonna be, um, more like duels or tries. Our conference is scheduled, um, six dates for cross-country, all of them being duels, um, where we host three of them and, um, again, within the guidelines, uh, that the state has put out. Um, sports that move into the, uh, spring season that are typically offered in the fall are football, um, boys', soccer, volleyball. Um, it'll start at February fifteenth. Something unique that the IHSA has put out, um, which is totally, uh, new this year is, uh, they're allowing contact days, which we'll get into the stipend conversation, is, um, the state's allowing twenty contact days starting September seventh, and then those will go through Halloween. With only offering three sports, um, at the high school, there's gonna be a lot of students that are looking for stuff to do, uh, which this twenty contact days, and contact typically means coaching. Um, in, in a normal school year, you wouldn't be allowed to coach your kid if you were, you were out of season. Uh, you'd be able to open the gym up, a lot of weight room, but you wouldn't be able to give direct instruction. Uh, so those twenty contact days, um, are permitted. Um, we will run more of a practice like, uh, with direct instruction. Um, again, following strictly to the guidelines that are put out from the Department of Health, um, where it's really detailed based on what sport, um, is being offered. You got low-risk sports that are, you know, happen right now. Uh, those are allowed to have contests against other schools, your, typically your individual sports. Um, and then you have the medium risk, which, uh, the state classifies volleyball, boys' soccer, basketball into the medium risk category, where you can have things like intrasquad scrimmages. You couldn't go play another school, but you could play against your own teams, um, and run more of a normal practice. Where in the summer camps, we had no contact, uh, whatsoever. So they are changing some of the restrictions of, based on the, the risk level of the sports. Uh, higher-risk sports being wrestling and football, cheerleading and dance that have stunt team, there's no stunt in there, go down to the medium, uh, risk. So we reduce those contact days, um, at high school level to, uh, schedule practices. Um, you know, going down to the middle school level, um, the IHSA governs, uh, one sport that we offer at the middle school level, level, and that's cross-country. They start tomorrow. Uh, we've worked that communication, uh, with Lisa Adler and cross-country coaches there. They're signing up and ready to go. We pushed the start date back a week because they needed to get all the protocol in place. Uh, but then the, all the other traditional sports at the middle school, um, that aren't allowed to happen because competitive play isn't gonna work. Um, being boys' soccer, volleyball, football, and then the sideline cheer that goes along with football, um, they're postponed. And I, I don't know what the middle school's gonna do in terms of restructuring it. I don't see it being like the high school where they restructure the entire season to go into different areas, because they're just not the governing bodies like the IHSA, where all the middle schools are gonna be on the same page to be able to do it. Um, I guess that kind of leads into where, what we talked about with the stipend committee, um, that's what we put together last week, and what we could possibly offer to those kids, um, and coaches for the sports at, right now at the middle school that aren't gonna happen, um, in that amount of time, it's already really now, um, until the winter season, which would end be around Halloween.
So one of, one of the things that we really wanna do, we wanna be able to offer things up to the students, uh, if at all possible, whenever possible. So for those areas, we, we're asking the coaches and or sponsors to come back with a proposal of how we can still continue to do something within the season, even though it's not gonna be a normal season. Uh, and that's from a, from a coaching standpoint. From a sponsor standpoint, there's a variety of the, uh, clubs and activities that actually can occur from a remote standpoint. So we may be able to continue so though. So we're asking for a plan as well for each of the sponsors as to how they would be able to continue, but, uh, if they're not able to meet face-to-face. So we, we still have some discussion to go through, some things to work through and see what the numbers are and figure out how we would pro-rate pay in case the season dates were completely canceled based on the number of days that they actually had with the students.
So we call it the engagement plan, uh, and everything's gonna look different based on the sport or activity, but also similar in what we're asking, the expectations from the coaches, uh, or sponsors. Uh, so within that plan, again, this, we didn't bring anything forward as a proposal because uh, we were still in the discussion phase with these coaches and the view, but, um, it would then be detailed in, in what activities they would provide, how they would provide it. Um, when I met with the middle school coaches, uh, we discussed, because they're allowed to do things in person still, um, and we have to always plan for the what if. We went to a phase where we weren't in person, but they could do something similar to like an interreal program. Um, I would run it, or I would ask them to run similar to what we're doing at the high school level with our contact days, uh, where families could sign up. Um, and the coaches would then put together that plan of what their intended goals are, their outcomes, um, the dates, how many times are they gonna meet, how are we gonna stay within the guidelines, um, that the state put out. Um, and then as we look forward to the high school, I'm always thinking of like that what if, if something were to get canceled, we have a plan in place. Um, you know, are we, how are we gonna showcase our kids? Um, how are we gonna provide awards night, uh, if we didn't have to go to a, a remote situation? Um, and, and that's, that would be detailed in that plan that they'd have to provide.
Now, we, we currently have through the original co-corrector committee that was formed, every one of the club's activities and athletics had to create a job description. So within that job description has a number of contact days, a number of athletic events, uh, that they'll be hosting or competitions with, with the clubs and activities. So we have, we do have a foundation to, um, map that against whatever we get back as feedback.
Luke, when do you anticipate IHSA, um, making a decision on which of sports? Because I mean, that can come as early as October.
Uh, I think that it's gonna be fluid. I don't, I, they set dates, um, but realistically, the November sixteenth, they could get pushed and then the other days could change as well. Uh, they have made a commitment that they wanna get all sports in if possible. Um, and they're gonna do whatever they can within the timeframe of the school year, which I think goes to a bunch of lifers, um, to get them in. Uh, I know that the, uh, the football season is a driving factor with the IHSA because it brings in financially a lot of money. Um, so they've made a commitment to try to keep that, that postseason, but really all post-seasons in play. Um, just whatever degree they can, if it's a one-day something, uh, but they are, they have said that they are gonna try to get all sports in if possible.
As we're trying to work to get all those sports, football and soccer, two of our bigger school sports in terms of numbers. Starting in February, we don't have a field house.
Yeah.
We have a shared grass field. What are we looking at to try to accommodate for that?
So, yeah, we do have a good relationship with the sports dome. Uh, they, uh, we already tentatively reserved those dates from February fifteenth through March eleventh. Um, for those programs that would need it, they wouldn't have to get used to playing outside in the hole. Um, also with our field, we didn't plan on a field that was frozen, it wouldn't be safe. Uh, so we've already talked to the conference that, uh, we would share the facilities of schools that have turf. We're one of three in the conference that don't have turf, uh, being that the Spigos also have grass. Uh, and then also, we don't wanna tear up our field early in the year, but we also wanna play home games. So if we can backload our home games with the seven that would be scheduled, um, that would be ideal for us.
And then just, so would we give a supply of bussing for the kids and all these kind of things? If we are using something like the dome, and be able to do it for all levels and things like that?
Yeah, we used it last year when we were in the playoffs and we had this three inches of snow that, a couple days before, and it's a really good facility. Our baseball team's even went over there this year, uh, and soccer, uh, before the spring season, uh, was shut down. And, uh, you know, it's affordable, we'd have to do some of the fundraising money that, uh, we've talked about in the past, but that would be something that we'd probably, uh, consider using the, the dome.
There's gonna be more guidelines, it sounds like, coming out from IHSA and IPH. Uh, you know, I, we've never texted earlier today, you know, just even the bussing that there's rumors out that they're gonna be coming out that it's gonna be mandatory six-foot distance on bus for any athletic activities. When you start looking at various sports, when you start giving free, you know, slow moves and travel.
And one, one thing that we're still working through is what spectators will look like, luckily, all these sports that are offered are outside. Um, and we have a really nice facility to host like a cross-country meet, and, um, Chris Muth and I drove the facility today and where we can park cars, where families could just. Chris Muth and I drove the facility today and where we can park cars, where families could just stay in their car or just near their car, where they wouldn't actually go on the course. There's ways to do these that are within all these guidelines. It's just going to be much different.
We're going to attempt to try to accommodate, especially like the high, the middle school alternative. But if we do go to something like an intermural, we're not under any guidelines.
Trying to figure out how this works.
Yeah.
Intermural basketball playing. And the pros can't make it work. Trying to think how we're going to do that.
Well, there are a couple.
So that's where the governor's plan is really detailed and much more than you can do. Our summer camps, if you can imagine our camps being offered, it was basically all skillwork.
Right.
It was zero contact. The high-risk sports are still going to run that way. So if we run an intermural football program, there's going to be zero contact. It's going to be all skill building. It's going to be drills. But they did change, and going forward, the medium-risk sports could do more than what they've done over the summer. Or they could run almost like a normal practice. Now, we'd be smart in how we implement anything. And it's still going to be mostly skill building, but you could potentially do more game-like situations with the medium-risk sports like a soccer or a basketball, volleyball. But within the guidelines, you couldn't go play another school. That's the big thing with why we can't offer middle school sport officially and let them go play another middle school. It's not within the guidelines.
Yeah, cohort mitigation.
Yeah, yeah. The parents are reciting off of this.
Yes, that is part of the, the, the medium-risk sport would be a way to form, which we already put into, play with all of our summer camps.
That's a question that we want, we want the board's direction on too, or at least next week. It's not just high school and middle school. We have elementary and intermural programs that typically come mid-September and we start up. And there's, we're going to have to make decisions on, is that something we want to, or is that one of those things, let's wait and see when we are in September?
Oh man, it sounds to me like you want to run all your summer, your energy summer.
Very similar to those middle school students. We're not going to offer for every sport. That wasn't the plan. It would be a season by season. So if we got into the winter and say middle school sports were still in the same situation and they weren't going to happen, I think that we would, if this worked well, we would probably offer something similar. Again, going back to that template of an engagement plan. But also in play, if we were remote, that was something that the committee really talked about is, if the situation where we're at home, what, how are we going to provide the opportunities for the kids in whatever way they can? They don't want them to miss a year, whatever it might be, if it's banner, if it's a sport.
And looking at that too, is what if things are great? What if the numbers are spectacular in October, November, we're prepared and we're moving forward with opportunities. And we're going to make sure that these opportunities are available for these kids, whether they're not, as I said, whether they're not marching band or whether they're not soccer. We want to make sure that these opportunities are possible. We're exploring every opportunity.
Right. You can move whichever way the metrics go in the camp.
Has there been, how about the youth sport programs from the Park District? Has there been?
Uh, there's, of course the summer.
Typically offer the, you know, so rather than us taking the risk of the fifth grade basketball, they usually run youth programs.
YYBS has been going since June. YYTF has been canceled. So there's no football.
There's no football.
No football on flag, no tackle football on flag. They went the same decision as the IHSA.
That's recently changed though as well. The governor, the IDPH wasn't governing all the youth sports the same. Schools were under the ISB guidelines where the youth sports were under a different set of guidelines from the Department of Health. Now they're more consistent. So I think you're going to see more of the same type of offerings from schools as well as what the Park District might. We're allowed to do the same thing with this play.
Like there's, there's new framework for, for fall baseball that used to happen when kids would travel out of state. And that's now they're keeping it within the region and the state. So even those extra outside programs. We're not allowing right now, it's by our protocol, we're not allowing any youth outside groups for our facility. This would obviously clean even.
The other piece is that, I mean, obviously we want to get our kids with our coaches and engaging them. Some kids wouldn't take part in any type of club activities if they wasn't involved, you know, at that school. And going back to the twenty contact days at the high school, our coaches are going to be, as long as everything's going well, doing more than they typically would over the course of those two months, which I know everybody's gone through different loops with different, our, our three sports are going to move to the early spring, late winter. That's completely different for them. And having to go through quite a bit of changes. I know they want to work with kids, but it's also going to be difficult for them, whatever their situation is at home, to go and coach February fifteenth through May first. So we're looking at more of a year-round approach this year to giving our kids opportunities.
Creative.
So I, I guess, I want to make sure that, before we go off this topic, the board is comfortable with the committee continuing to look at from a compensation level and stipends for our coaches and activities and clubs. Obviously, there's great value in our staff engaging with our kids for many reasons. Obviously, the mental health aspect, the interaction with adults in fear, but also the very step in preparation for what might be coming for those off-season sports. You know, obviously, we know the more we can keep kids involved with it.
Well, yeah, that's probably true.
Sure. Are you comfortable that the committee continues and then bringing something back?
Yeah.
For the final recommendation?
Oh, yes.
I just want to commend Luke. In absence of Jeff Persie at the middle school, Luke has been instrumental in helping Lisa Adler and, and helped the middle school with communication and with working with coaches. He's been tremendous. And obviously, he's worked at the high school in this area. It's, he's done a fantastic job. We're lucky to have him on staff and part of our team in Yonk, so thanks, Luke.
Yes.
Do you guys want to come back in the near future with a follow-up and a recommendation?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. I'm sending you business and we have some personal recommendations.
So the personal recommendation, the first one up is the three FTE that I spoke about earlier. We're asking for a rule.
Send me a motion on cable, please.
Motion to approve the addition of three-point FTE to ground entry staff in for the twenty 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 twenty-one school year.
Second.
Move in second, additional comments? We're called?
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Vitulov?
Yes.
Mr. Pazovic?
Yes.
Ms. Shields? And Dr. Burton?
Yes. Then we have some resignations. Send me a motion, please.
Motion to approve the resignations as presented.
Move in second, additional comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And then last, we have some questions.
Motion to go through the hires presented.
Second.
Move in second, any additional comments? We're called, please.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Vitulov?
Yes.
Mr. Pazovic?
Yes.
Ms. Shields? And Dr. Burton?
Yes. And then last, we have superintendent board.
Yeah, I don't have a lot of updates. Just, I just want to thank Heather and her team and the maintenance and custodians. She did so a tremendous job and many thanks shorthand. Just, they continue, as we saw the plan that's put in front of us, there's so much that weighs back on that department and the people. I mean, they've been here since March. They've been our essential workers. They haven't left. And we've had a fantastic job. And your assistant Cheryl, which has been fantastic in your work that you're doing. I also want to let, you know, just thank Amy Schultz and the tech department with Ryan going through, what he's going through. Amy has really stepped up in the broad-based leadership for that department and kept things moving. But just a great effort on her end. And just kudos again to the staff, from the administrative team that's all here, to the hundred-member committee, to all those that have provided feedback and questions to us and challenged our thinking and to the parents. You know, we've had a lot of parents, both with support, with hard questions, with expressing concerns. But our community has been, has been great. And again, it's, it's, we're always, we always brag about Yorkville and that we are Yorkville and how much people care and the pride that they have for our schools, for the programs, for, for our staff. And it just, times like this, it's an easy reminder how lucky we are here and how special it is to serve a district like this. So, and to the board, thank you for your continued support and work. I know all of you have been, in one form or another, whether it's sharing of articles, whether it's, you know, talking me off of legit times, whether it's, you know, Gary answering medical questions when he can. And I know it's, it's, it's a thankless job at times for all of you. But I hope you see the fruits of your work and your thought leadership and the passion that you all bring to your role as board members because it makes us better. And you have certainly done that. So I guess a great thanks to you as well.
Do you want to go through these questions or should we answer them online? We want, there seems to be only eight.
So there's a question about do you, do we intend to create combination classes? Do you accommodate students like a second and third grader together in the same group?
Yes. So that happened particularly in the hybrid model because we wanted to honor the parent's choice of their educational model. And so there were some cases in which we had to create multi-grade level classrooms. Those classrooms were to ensure that we had access with staff in order to run the section.
Similarly, we anticipate, which we normally do in some of our special education programs, like our Stars program or our Last program, typically run multi-grade levels.
I think that next question, Melinda, about the hot food model clarification. I've had a lot of parents ask me about this, so would you mind to clarify that as well, please?
So this was an I private message this period back to ask if they were talking about the high school or the middle school. And they were talking about the high school, so they just wanted to clarify the days of attendance for the hybrid.
You answered the Q and A.
ELL, it's ELL. Well, remote learning, yeah, it was a remote learning ELL.
Yeah, if it's referring to ELL services, we will still be providing EL services regardless of the modality that the parent, parents chose.
Next one's just a comment. Someone did it. Hi Greg, Steve, Nick, I think you can take.
Hybrid students assigned to a teacher? Is teaching ever done?
Yes.
Yes.
We, we, no one can see these questions, so we have to, we have to ask, we have to let them know in the audience what the questions are.
So the, so the question is, are hybrid students assigned to a hybrid teacher? And the answer is yes. Hybrid students are assigned to a hybrid teacher.
An answer across all regions, correct?
That's a, that's across kindergarten through, excuse me, first grade through sixth grade. They're assigned to a hybrid teacher. In seventh and eighth grade, the hybrid students come to the class and will be in the same room as the students that are there face-to-face every single day. And at the high school, at the high school, the hybrid model is two days in person and then two days remote. And then that continues throughout the course of the year. So effectively, every two weeks or ten school days, students will be attending in person for five days and remotely for five days.
And all these plans are on the website as well. So if there's additional questions, here's kind of the website.
In each of the buildings will be, next ten days will be some communications out related to their specific schedules and the buildings that they're going to.
I think the next two we address. I think that might be it.
You know, it's really nice. This is a great way to get parent participation. Really appreciate all the questions.
Part of the solution.
Absolutely.
Alright, we still have eighty-two participants. Any other additional questions? Alright, need a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Move in second and we're called? Oh, I guess we don't need to call. Almost in favor? Any opposed? And the passes or adjournments? Thank you.
President, thank you.
Thank you, Spencer.
Nice job.
Did a great job.